I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We're going to go right to visitors. And I believe Don Gilbert, the president of Vermont Gas is going to do a presentation for us. Don, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. As Mike said, my name's Don Gilbert, I'm the president and CEO of Vermont Gas Systems. Hopefully you'll be able to see this, I'll try to stand back so you can. I'm here tonight with Tim Lyons, who's our vice president of sales and marketing, and also Steve Ward, who's our director of communications. And we're here tonight to talk a little bit about natural gas. What we hope to do is cover a couple of topics. We want to talk to you a little bit about natural gas in general. Actually, before I start that, let me just ask, how many of you have experienced with natural gas? Either you're currently using it at some facility or have experienced in the past using it to heat homes? Couple of you, so some aren't as familiar. This is helpful, because what I'll do is I'll go through and explain a little bit about the product. I'll talk about our company, why people want us to expand natural gas in Vermont. And then I'll talk a little bit about how we're proposing to try to bring gas down to Addison County and the Virgin's area. And then we'll answer any questions you might have. I'll start with, what is natural gas? Natural gas is a gas. It's delivered to customers' homes, to businesses, through a network of pipes. And what the product that is delivered is CH4, it is methane. And when you look at it, you see the molecular makeup here of CH4. It's one carbon, four hydrogens. And what's important is, when you look at other fuels that are used in Vermont, propane, propane's a pretty clean fuel, but it's got three carbons. When you look at gasoline, we're talking eight. When you go up to fuel oil, you start to see fourteen up to twenty carbons. And what that means is that when natural gas is used to consume, to burn, to heat a home, or to fuel a vehicle, it produces a lot less carbon, a lot less greenhouse gas and other products. That's one of the reasons you're seeing a lot of talk today about the development and expansion of natural gas service. Where's our gas come from? In Vermont, we're somewhat unique. All of our gas comes from Canada. We're not connected to the US system. It's a little unusual. Most companies in the US have connections to a system that brings gas up from the Gulf Coast. Ours doesn't. All of our gas comes from out over in Alberta. And what we do is, we fit into the system. We are the delivery system for natural gas to customers. But if we work our way back up the chain, there are producers that actually drill for the gas and extract it out of the ground. They run it into a network of pipes that go to a collection system. It's run through a processing plant where some of the other elements that come out of the ground, butane, propane, other elements that have some value are stripped off and they end up being sold. And then the gas is piped through a network of pipes across Canada. It's a network called the TransCanada Pipeline System that brings it over to just north of Vermont at Phillipsburg, where we pick it up and then we deliver it to customers. So we are part of this chain. We end up taking that gas at the border, and I'll show you in a minute our system for how we deliver it to the customers. One of the other things I think is important to know is, what's the outlook for natural gas? There are three things you should know. First, natural gas supplies are at all-time highs. I don't remember in my career having seen this kind of supply situation. It used to be, we've measured the reserves for natural gas by looking at how much gas is in the ground versus how much is being consumed each year. And it was typically around ten years of reserves. They kept exploring and finding more reserves, but it was around ten years. The world changed about three to five years ago when they started to develop shale gas around North America. And what we've seen is these large shale basins have resulted in there now being over a hundred years of reserves for natural gas out there. So we're in a very strong supply situation. What that has done is it's resulted in natural gas prices declining. We've seen them decline considerably over the years. And the other important thing is that it's actually diverged from oil prices. It used to be, you can see here on the chart, that natural gas prices and oil prices seem to track together. Today, we aren't seeing that. With this development of the strong supply picture, we're finding that natural gas has separated from oil, declined, and we're seeing a significant price advantage. That I'll show you more of in a minute. So looking out, the third thing you should know about for natural gas is that the prices are projected to remain low out into the foreseeable future and be very competitive. So that's the product. Let me talk a little bit about Vermont Gas, the company. Vermont Gas is the state of Vermont's only natural gas distribution company. We're the only company that's distributing and providing service to customers around Vermont. We were formed back in 1965. We were formed, excuse me, as a result of a state initiative to look at bringing energy into the state during a period when they really felt they needed to support economic development. The company was formed, we developed a pipeline system down in Burlington. You'll see that in a minute. And we are regulated by the Vermont Public Service Board, and ever since with the time we were formed. We have over forty years of experience building natural gas pipelines, maintaining them, delivering gas to customers. And we're very much committed to and interested in bringing natural gas to more Vermonters. So how does the natural gas get from that pipeline at the border down to the customers? I'll give you a quick tour of our system. Up in the upper left-hand corner is a picture of the gate station. This is where the pipe comes out of the ground from Canada, connects to our pipe that then runs down to the Burlington area. From there, there's a network of transmission pipes that run underground. These are buried three feet underground. This is our sixteen-inch pipe, it's actually up along, that's eighty-nine that you see there, near the Mississauga River. That's the pipe being installed. Once it's installed, I challenge you to find it. The only way you'd find that pipe today is there's a sign down near the river. But our transmission line pretty much follows eighty-nine all the way down to the Burlington area. Down around Burlington, we have what's called a propane air plant. This is a peat-shaded plant. It's a plant that on the coldest days of the year, instead of having to bring more gas across Canada, we can actually turn this on and mix propane and air together, inject it in our lines, and provides supplemental supply to meet the demand. And it's a very cost-effective way for us to provide gas supply in the coldest days of the year. From the end of our system, we have a network of pipes that go out to customers. And these are small pipes, smaller than this transmission line. Excuse me, some of our half-inch pipes, very small, going to the homes. And then you'll see meters at the homes or at the businesses where the natural gas then goes in and is used to heat the home or process or whatever it is for a business. This is all operated out of our offices that are in south Burlington, Vermont. And from here, we monitor and manage that pipeline twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So that's how the gas gets there. Who do we currently serve? We serve a mix of customers. We have residential, commercial, industrial customers, all on our system. If you look at the mix, it's about eighty-eight percent of it are residential customers. So it sounds like it's almost all residential customers. But when you look at how much volume's consumed, it's actually divided up fairly evenly, almost a third, a third, a third, between the residential, commercial, industrial customers. Why do they have natural gas? What is it about natural gas that makes it so that the customers use it? Well, there's several things. It's very economical. I'll show you the price chart, but this is one of the most significant things today, that natural gas is significantly less than oil or propane and/or electricity. Typically, we don't see competition for electricity when we have natural gas available. It's also less expensive to maintain the natural gas equipment that's out there. The equipment's more efficient. It's not only that the equipment's more efficient, we have efficiency programs, I'll talk about in a minute, that have really benefited the customers. And the delivery system is very efficient. Think about any of the other fuels. If you're using oil, propane, wood, that all has to be delivered by truck. Once you put a network of natural gas pipes in, you no longer have to have those trucks delivering them. So it's a very efficient system in delivery. It's clean and it's an important tool for economic development. We're seeing more and more interest in natural gas because of the economic development benefits. One of the other things we find that the customers really value are the services that we provide. Vermont Gas has a number of different services. It's the basic natural gas, providing the service to the customers, the product to the customers. And there are different ways we do this, either firm or interruptible. We can talk more about that if there are questions. But there's also, we have rental programs for customers that don't want to make the upfront investment in putting in new equipment. We actually rent out equipment. You can have a conversion burner for somewhere around eighteen dollars a month. So it keeps the cost down upfront. We also provide repair service, and this is really important to our customers. Knowing that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we're there if they have any concerns or issues. If they have a problem with heating, we'll be out there to help them to get it going again. And then energy efficiency is really important. I want to take a minute to talk about that. Vermont Gas has been a leader in developing energy efficiency programs for its customers. We provide audits to our customers. We help them to finance high-efficient equipment. We help them to do things to tighten up their homes. As a result of this, we've provided services to over twenty-two thousand of our customers. And we've actually saved them a considerable amount of money. We completed four thousand seven hundred audits. We've ended up saving seven point three billion cubic feet of gas from this. And that's equivalent to, if you looked at, the equivalent of sixty-four thousand homes providing their heat, their hot water, as well as their cooking. That's how much energy that we've saved through these programs. So they're excellent programs, very much valued to our customers, primarily because we've been able to help them to save, one, eleven million dollars a year. We've reduced greenhouse gas emissions by four hundred and twenty-eight thousand tons. And we've reduced nitrogen emissions by another three hundred and thirty-six thousand tons. So these are some great programs that are available to natural gas customers when we bring service into the new communities. You know, it's great for me to tell you all about this, but I think the more important thing is to hear what the customers have to say. And this shows you, there's a customer satisfaction survey that we do on a regular basis. We have a ninety-four percent level of customer satisfaction. So it really is starting to show the benefits of natural gas have been well-received by the customers that are out there. Why do people want to see natural gas expanded? As I talked about, there are a lot of benefits. There are a couple of key things that we're seeing within the state. One of them is that there's real concern about climate change. And we're seeing that eighty percent of our greenhouse gases are coming from sectors that we can address with natural gas. One of the large ones is transportation. Forty-six percent of our greenhouse gases are coming from transportation. Outside, we've got a natural gas vehicle that we drove down in today. It's a little Honda Civic that we're running. You can reduce the greenhouse gas emissions out of vehicles by just converting over to natural gas by as much as thirty percent. So we can do something about reducing that. The other sector that really is driving Vermont's greenhouse gases are residential, industrial, and commercial fuel use. Because natural gas is so much cleaner, because it's only got one carbon, we can help to address that as well. So this is one of the reasons people are looking at converting. The other thing we're seeing an interest in expanding natural gas further is because of the rapidly increasing oil prices. And this is really significant in Vermont, especially when you take into consideration that seventy-one percent of our homes in Vermont are heated with either oil or propane. And by contrast, when you look at the US, only thirteen and a half percent of our homes are heated with oil or propane. So as we see oil prices increasing significantly, it's having a bigger and bigger impact on those of us in Vermont that are still heating with oil or propane. The final thing, and I think this is probably one of the most significant ones of why people want to see natural gas expanded, is the difference in price. Today, we have a forty-one percent competitive advantage. We are forty-one percent less expensive than fuel oil and fifty-eight percent less expensive than propane. So clearly, that's one of the big factors that drives people to want to see natural gas expanded further in the state. We have, you know, it's great to talk about those benefits, but let me show you what we've been able to do and some of the positive things that we've achieved through expanding here in the past few years. For the past three years, we've started a program to try to expand into new communities. And one of the first ones was in Jericho. It's one of the first new towns that we went into we hadn't served before. That was a great success. From there, we went on to Underhill and then on to Heinsberg. And those were so successful that next year, we're planning on going into Richmond as well. Let me show you the benefits that we were able to achieve. Jericho was the first one. We did some analysis afterwards to see what the benefits were that we've been able to produce by bringing natural gas to that community. We went into Jericho thinking we were going to have two hundred, two hundred and fifty customers that would be interested in converting. We had four hundred and fifty customers that wanted to convert. Now, this was back in two thousand and eight when oil prices had gone up so high. But still, it's pretty significant to have that kind of interest in conversions. When we looked at it, we boiled it all down, looked at what the savings were. For Jericho, there was four hundred and fifty customers. We saved them six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, a very significant savings. You see here that we've given them range. And one of the reasons is, oil prices came back down. We said, well, let's look at when oil prices are back down at a lower level. It was still three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in savings that we saved those customers. So very significant economic savings. In addition, we reduced greenhouse gases by over nine hundred tons of CO2, another twelve tons of other greenhouse gases. And we haven't tried to calculate what the savings were from getting those trucks off the road and reducing the emissions that would come from those truck traffic required to deliver the other fuels. So, given that, how can we bring the same types of economic and environmental benefits to the Virgin's? Tell you what we're doing and the project that we're looking at. First, let me start with the long-term vision. Our goal here is to try to find ways to expand the economic and environmental benefits of natural gas to more of Vermonters. In doing that, what we're trying to do is find ways to extend natural gas down into new communities in Vermont. And eventually, what we'd really like to do, you see here, the blue line going off near Rutland, is to extend the service over to connect to the US system. The challenge we've got in doing this, in this long-term plan, is it's very expensive to build infrastructure in Vermont. The natural gas system requires about a million and a half dollars a mile to build transmission plant. By contrast, Velco's transmission line was about three million a mile. So it's, you know, less expensive than that, however, it's still an expensive investment that will be required. The problem is, there are small markets down in the more rural areas of Vermont that we're trying to serve with that large investment. So it makes a real challenge for us. And this is nothing new to Vermont. Think about electricity. Electricity didn't come to Vermont until the sixties after the Rural Electrification Act that resulted in federal funds that helped to support expanding electricity up into the more rural communities. Same with the Northwest Reliability Project, the transmission system that was built here. That was funded through out-of-state funds that were available. And we've seen with broadband, those are federal funds that are coming in to support that. So this is nothing new. And we've looked at several ways. We said, well, how can we find ways to fund this expansion? There are great benefits we can provide, how can we fund it? Can we do it with a new market? New market's too small. It's a lot of investment because there's a long way to pull the pipe. Can we do it with federal funds? We've gone with the federal government. There aren't dollars available for federal funding right now of natural gas systems. And we've looked at state funding. In New York, they're actually funding a fifty-mile expansion with state funds. There aren't state funds available in Vermont. So what's the only alternative that we have? We feel it is using our existing market in the new market to fund the expansion on its own. And the idea, the benefit of doing this is that we can do it in a manner that we believe will keep rates at the same level, won't push rates up, but still maintain a very strong competitive advantage. And we're looking at an approach for doing this that I want to go through for you here in the last couple of slides. What we propose is what's referred to as the System Expansion and Reliability Fund. And we presented this to the Vermont Public Service Board. We're hoping, if you're interested in seeing natural gas service come to Vermont, Virgin's, to support this concept. What is involved is, we had a further decline in wholesale price of natural gas. We could have passed that through in a further rate reduction. We've had nine rate reductions in the past ten quarters. We reduced our rates to the point that today, we have a forty-one percent competitive advantage over oil. And we felt that it made more sense to set that further savings aside and use it to support expansion. So instead of having the rates drop down and then work towards building the expansion, once we had the rates swing back up, having a fifteen percent swing in rates, we proposed, set those dollars aside, smooth it out, and that way, we'll end up having the rates remain relatively flat. Now, here's how it would look. If we have a forty-one percent competitive advantage today, if we had passed through that reduction, we would have a forty-six percent competitive advantage. But by holding on to it to apply those dollars towards the expansion, we'll maintain that forty-one percent competitive advantage. And even if we have additional changes in costs, which we know we will have, we still will have over a thirty percent competitive advantage over oil. So this approach has appealed to a number of people as we propose it to them. It's a good way for us to pursue an expansion, and what can we do with it? This fund will allow us to bring gas down into Addison County. What you see here is our initial proposal, which involves taking transmission capacity, increasing the capacity of our existing pipe. We'll have to do a little bit of that up around St. Alden's. Then bringing a transmission line around Burlington. And then building a distribution line. We're proposing to bring it down along Route Seven. We're open to other ideas. This is just a preliminary proposal. But by doing this, we can believe we can serve three thousand more customers in Addison County. We can bring over a billion cubic feet of natural gas. It's about an eighth of what we currently serve up in Franklin County. But a significant amount of energy, very clean energy. We can help to support some important businesses in the area that we have listed here. What would it look like in the towns? Whoever we're proposing to serve, typically, we serve the most concentrated areas in the towns. We can't go out and serve all the rural areas that require us to put too much pipe in. So what we typically look at is areas that have the more concentrated growth. Typically, quarter to half-acre lots are where we end up going the pipeline. So in the center of the town, and we do not like sprawl. We want as much concentration of growth as possible. So we would serve the areas that have more concentrated growth in the Virgin's, as well as middle area. And in between the towns, there would be a pipeline that would be extended to connect them. The benefits of this approach are that we believe we can bring some significant economic savings to customers. Natural gas, we believe we serve around three thousand customers, as I said, in the Addison County area initially. This is a first step towards a longer-term goal of trying to bring gas further in Vermont, eventually connect to the US system. But in this first step, we believe over twenty years, we can generate forty-four million dollars in energy savings. It'll help to create jobs, it'll help to retain jobs. In addition, it will, on the environmental side, help us reduce our dependence on oil. Six point three million gallons reduction in oil use as a result of this, and a sixteen thousand ton reduction in overhaul of all greenhouse gas emissions. I've challenged people, I've gone through this, that is there another example, and I'll say, other than energy efficiency, that can do more to reduce greenhouse gases than by converting over to natural gas? I haven't heard many people come up with any other alternatives. This is one of the cleanest alternatives that we've got out there. And then it will help us also to meet this call for natural gas. We're getting a lot of people asking us to try to expand. It's interesting, we had a customer meeting a couple of weeks ago. Half the people that showed up at the customer meeting weren't customers. They were people that wanted natural gas service and heard we were having this meeting. So it'll help us to bring gas to more people in Vermont. And it'll help us to achieve this long-term goal of trying to eventually connect to the US system and someday serve Rutland as well. Finally, let me just talk about the schedule. If we're successful with this, if the funding's approved, and if we are able to move forward with this, our proposal would be in two thousand and eleven, we would be starting to be working on all the environmental analysis. We work very closely with the towns, with the communities, along the route, to make sure that we address concerns that people have. We would then file for approval in two thousand and twelve. We want to do this right. We want to take the time to have really worked through all, any issues that might be out there. We filed in two thousand and twelve, hopefully in two thousand and thirteen, have approval to move forward in construction in two thousand and fourteen, hire the contractors to start building the line in two thousand and fifteen to serve customers. I'd really like to serve you sooner than that, if there's interest. But realistically, we're putting together a schedule that we feel confident that we can meet. So that's the concept, that's the proposal. We're really hoping that if there's interest here in natural gas, we would hope the town would support us. We have a hearing on May eleventh before the Public Service Board in which we are reviewing this fund. We have interim approval of it. We've heard a lot of people that are interested in supporting it. If the town's interested in supporting it, it would be helpful as well. And we'd appreciate if you're willing to issue a letter in support of it to do so that we could use at the meeting on May eleventh, or if somebody wanted to come up and speak at that meeting. So that's the proposal. Questions?
I'm going to pose any questions from the council. I'll ask them first, then I'll go to the audience and I'll throw them the chance as well.
Sure. A question about, could you just briefly talk about how the distribution system is engineered and how you negotiate and purchase rights of way for the pipeline?
We work with the landowners on purchasing the right of way. We will identify a route. We try to work with the towns, with the landowners to identify a route that's acceptable to them. We then work out and purchase the right of way. And the construction of, you're asking about the actual engineering of the pipe?
I guess my question basically is, it looked like the main line would be going somewhere, or at least initially, somewhere near Route Seven.
Correct.
So the actual distribution system within the city, it doesn't sound like there's going to be major construction of pipeline or whatever within the city.
Correct. What we try to do is follow the roadways, so we don't have to go across, nor we go along areas that have the roads and the shoulders, along the shoulders of the roads. So we don't have to go off into people's properties to do that. When you get into a community, we have the pipe out in the, sometimes the greenbelt between the road and the sidewalk. And then from there, we will run a line under the ground to the customer's home and connect to the meter at the home. So it's a series of pipes, most of them following roadways with a service line that goes underground to the customer's meter on the side of their home. Does that answer the question? I'm not sure if I did.
Yeah, I think it's fine, yeah.
And in putting pipe in the community generally, what we do is we go before the select board to get a permit to be able to construct within a town.
We've just been through the reliability project and some of the, you know, some of the catfights that went into purchasing that right of way. I'm just curious how, I mean, obviously, it's a much, you know, the profile of it's a lot different, but just curious how you approached it.
I think you'd find this would be different than that. And we've been building, we've been putting in sixteen-inch pipe up Franklin County. Glad to take people up and show them that project. We found we're getting it to work very well with the towns and the landowners up there. We had worked with the Abenackies that were concerned about the routing of the line. Just try to find a route that would be acceptable. And I don't think you'd see, you haven't heard those kinds of concerns as we've been putting pipe in there.
Ziggy's?
Do you ever have any problems from Canada getting the natural gas? I mean, have you, I know you've probably covered yourself on this, but I'm just wondering, you know, if you're expanding the gas, is that why eventually you want to hook up to the US gas?
It is one of the reasons. We have not had problems with getting the natural gas from Canada. We have been in operation since sixty-five and never had a problem with that. There is a large supply in the Alberta supply basin. They want to sell it. Quite frankly, they're competing with the development of the shale gas in the US. And they're having to find more markets for it. So I'm confident we will have plenty of supply. And the other part of your question? I'm sorry?
No, that just got answered.
Okay. I think we're in a very strong supply situation where I don't expect we would have any problems continuing to meet the demand that's here.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Four questions. How, is natural gas, for people who have propane, propane appliances, how, is it difficult or is it, well, propane appliances run, for example, so we have a cook stove at home that runs on propane. Can you run that off natural gas? Or how difficult is it to, especially propane appliances, to convert to natural gas? Is that a big investment for people?
Let me have Tim Lyons talk to that.
Generally, no. It's somewhere around seven hundred dollars, seven, eight hundred dollars to convert over heating system from propane to natural gas. In some cases, you could purchase a conversion kit that will do it. In other cases, you could drill up the orifice and be able to convert it that way. We try and make it easy at Vermont Gas. We've got a group of service technicians, about twenty of them, that will do these types of conversions.
Nope. Let's start off.
I have one other question. That's great. Related to Ziggy's a little bit. There's a lot written in the popular press about the environmental problems with the shale beds in Alberta. And I wondered if the extraction of gas is different from the, you know, extracting oil from these shale beds and what kind of, I guess, if the natural gas processes degrade the environment, you know, I don't know, very little other than what we read in the popular press. I'm just curious about the process of extracting gas from these shale beds and whether or not you feel like maybe that may be an issue in terms of availability or in terms of kind of long-term price of natural gas? of long-term price of natural gas?
It's a good question. The, and I think what you're referring to, there are two different things. One of them is the tar sands up in Canada. There are actually tar sands, and that's oil extraction that we're not involved in. Our gas is coming out of gas wells in Alberta. But the area that you refer to that there is, we do see some things in the media today are around the development of the shale gas in North America, primarily down, you're hearing the most controversy, down the Pennsylvania-New York area.
Hydrofracting.
The hydrofracting.
Hydrofracting.
What the process is that they developed, and one of the reasons we've seen this vast supply of gas develop is they've learned how to drill down into the ground and then directionally bore into layers of shale that they know have natural gas in it. It used to be they'd drill conventionally, they'd drill holes, extract gas out of pockets, and they'd end up moving on to the next location. Today, they've learned how to directionally bore into these layers. And the concerns, and some environmental groups are concerned, is they're saying, well that could result in contamination of the water supply. Because the process is they drill down in the ground and then they pump high-pressure water with a mixture of sand and other elements down in to fracture that rock and extract the natural gas. But when you listen to those in the industry, they're saying, well first off, you need to understand that the water supply is up near the surface while they're drilling two miles down below, way below where the water table is. So it's unlikely that it'll contaminate water tables in that type of drilling. However, how that water that's been pumped down in, that is extracted, is handled, is very important, and that's another concern. It needs to be handled properly and not just released into the water supply at the surface. So that's one of the big concerns that's out there. What we're seeing is, and what we've read about is, this hydrofracting has been used for decades. It's even used to produce water wells. There are hundreds of thousands of wells that have been produced in environmentally sensitive manners. So it can be done. The important thing is to make sure that we've got the proper regulation so it is done properly. I want to make sure that's done. I'm a trout fisher. I don't want screams harmed from this. And so I am very conscious of that, and I support the idea of making sure that good regulations in place so all of those producers are producing the natural gas in environmentally sensitive manner. It can be done, it is being done. I'm convinced we've got such a vast supply of natural gas available that we will find its ways to do it properly.
Any other questions from the council? If not, anyone in the audience, ask any questions, please speak up. Andy?
Are you saying all your gas from Alberta is coming from wells and not from hydrofractor at this point?
No, I'm saying, and I don't want to confuse this, natural gas goes into a network of pipes. So I can't tell you the molecule we serve, delivered from Burlington, exactly where it came from. The concern, the majority of the concern you're hearing from is coming from the New York and Pennsylvania area. But our gas is coming from Alberta. But I don't want to say that there isn't the potential that some of the gas that we deliver could come from wells that have been developed through hydrofractor.
Do you have any idea what the percentage might be from one to the other?
I don't. Just like I don't know where the gasoline that I put in my car comes from, I don't have a sense of exactly where it came from. What I can tell you is our gas, we get very little gas out of the U.S. right now.
Well, you represent that all of it's coming from wells in Alberta, but...
That's right. But it could come from, let me see if I can show you, there are ways that you could feed gas back up. It's unlikely right now, but you could feed the gas back up into the system. Our gas is all coming across here. There are ways that it could come up. So I don't want to say, you know, guarantee that the gas that's coming in doesn't come from those areas. But the important thing is, they have been producing this gas in an environmentally sensitive manner. They've demonstrated this. Many states.
In Alberta or in...
I think in both Alberta, I believe there has been some or, most of the Alberta gas has been produced conventionally. But I believe there is some hydrofracture.
Some hydrofracture.
I believe that they are starting to, and I don't have the picture up here now, but the supplies are all over North America. So I'm convinced we will see hydrofracturing developed in other regions of North America beyond just the U.S.
I know not all, I know not all that has been done responsibly. My brother lives in New York. I know that it has problems. I know that, I believe you that the technology is out there, and I agree with you that the regulation needs to be...
That's the important thing. It's really important that, and I know what you're talking about, because some of those areas out there, there are two issues out in that area. And one is that natural gas is up near the surface already.
Right, so there's, there has been some water contamination.
Right. And that's because naturally occurring, natural gas near the surface is done that. Even before, that was happening even before the hydrofracture. But if the hydrofracture isn't done properly, it can create problems. And we support the, you know, doing this in proper manner and regulating to ensure that it is done in a manner that assures that the gas is produced in an environmentally sensitive manner.
I'm not trying to target that.
No, I understand.
Period. I understand. I have a question from Mel.
Don, your chart about the rate structure, about going in front of the Public Service Board. First off, that's a multi-part question here. First off, it looks like you're going in front of the Public Service Board not for a rate increase. And so I'm wondering why you're in front of the Public Service Board when you're not looking to increase rates?
It's very interesting. What we're asking to do is to establish a fund. It's called the System Expansion Reliability Fund. And we're funding it with the dollars that we've saved because the wholesale price dropped further. So we aren't asking for a rate increase. What we're asking to do is to be able to establish this fund that will be getting funded from the savings in wholesale gas.
Okay, so from a regulatory standpoint, to set up that type of fund, even though there's no change in your rate, you need approval to create that fund from the Public Service Board. That's, related to that, do you expect your customers in Chittenden County, Franklin County, that are currently hooked up, wondering, do you suspect that there's going to be opposition from them? Because without having that reserve fund, they would benefit from reduced rates.
It's a good question, and one we had as we started to propose this. We've been out, we've talked to customers, we've talked to different communities, and we thought it was very important for us to get out and talk to our customers directly. So two weeks ago, we had customer meetings, and we invited all of our customers, sent out a newsletter to every one of our customers, in which we explained what we were doing, said we'd like to have a customer meeting, we want to update them on a number of things, including this fund, and they proposed to expand. We had a meeting up in Swan, Vermont. We had somewhere around 17 to 20 people attend. I think I sold some people there. Half the people that came were there as customers, half came because they wanted gas. We didn't hear a single person object to what was being proposed. It was not an issue in that customer meeting. We then had a customer meeting down in South Burlington a couple months later, and we had one individual who did say, he said, "I'm from Burlington, I think I prefer to have a rate reduction instead of establishing this fund." But again, there were 17 to 20 people there, and we heard some people ask some clarifications, but we didn't hear objection. And we, the fact that we sent this out to 45,000 customers, and only those showed up, a few showed up that had questions, we haven't gotten calls. I think people understand, and I think the important thing to recognize is, this is the way natural gas and infrastructure is developed in Vermont. Best example of that is Williston. When we first put a line out to the town of Williston, we couldn't justify the expansion just on the market that was there. It was a long line, it was going to be difficult. So what did we do? Well, we supported it with the existing customers. And today, Williston's grown to the point that it's now supporting the expansion to Jericho, to Underhill, to elsewhere. So I think people understand that this is the normal practice, and we aren't hearing objection. Doesn't mean that there aren't going to be some people that say, "No, I really prefer you reduce my rates earlier." But we have not heard that kind of concern other than the one individual.
Anyone else like to ask any questions? If not, Don, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What we're actually going to do is give, take about a five-minute recess so that...
All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order while they finish picking up so we, because we've got a little bit to cover tonight. We get Mel back to the table.
Yes, sir.
Hate to let him loose. Thank you. Okay. You sure you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, huh? Might quit by then.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. My van's gonna be...
We do not have to take any action on a letter of support on this. If you want to take and talk to citizens, we believe that there are, Mel and I talked, and we believe that we can crank out a letter and send it electronically. If the council did, we could look at acting on a letter of support if we chose to on May 10th. And they still would have it in time if, on the morning of May 11th, when they have to appear in front of the board. So, didn't know if somebody has a pleasure on which way to go, if they just want to, we're not asking for a motion, but just kind of a, does everybody want to let it sit until, give a chance to think about it and talk to others?
I just want to know where there's people stopping, are they going to go across the bridge, are they not going to go across the bridge, or things like that?
Well, it sounds like if they want to go to Goodrich, they're going to have to...
They're going to have to go across the bridge, go to Goodrich.
Well, they didn't say it, but I was assuming that's what they were talking about.
Well, that was one of the companies that they listed as a...
Okay. Because I didn't see, I couldn't see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things, Zig, I met with Don and Tim a number of months ago, really, and I was sworn to silence, you know, they were just investigating this and, you know, obviously they know how to get in touch with Goodrich, but people at Country Own Products, you know, Northlands, you know, the schools, you know, they were just gathering up contact people to, you know, try to find out, you know, the larger customers. And obviously, you know, they don't have to have everybody, but you need to, you know, you need to have a good, strong base. So, you know, they've been working on this, obviously, for quite, you know, quite some time, and, you know, certainly Goodrich is a, you know, would be a major, major customer. So it would definitely, you know, as he talked about, you know, because we are so densely populated, you know, the lots are so small here, you know, we're, you know, we're attractive to them. And, you know, one of the things, just so that you know, as Don said, you know, the, because they only serve dense areas, all right, it's not as though, you know, a company like Jackman Fuels or other companies that do business in this area selling propane, you know, there's the, service work could still be there, but also they would have customers, you know, certainly in the more rural areas, you know. And Tom Jackman is, he's aware of, you know, this. It's not, it's not, didn't come as a surprise to him. So it's not as though it would, you know, wipe out his business because there still is a, you know, a major customer base out in the not-so-dense parts of this area and county.
Anything else to say?
No.
So we'll just kind of let this ride and we'll make, we'll put it on as an agenda item.
On the tent.
On the tent. Sound reasonable?
There's a meeting on the tent.
Hey, we can knock it out, you watch. All right, warnings have been around, they've been circulated. I'd asked for a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting on April 12, 2011. Bo made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And Ziggy seconded it. Omissions, corrections, or errors? Anybody? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget report.
Yeah, one thing, Mike, just to step back just a little bit on warrants, Joan hit a wrong date. If you saw in your, thanks for pointing that out to us, that obviously the last meeting, the warrants were done on April 20th, and then obviously we, any bills that come in on Tuesday, we process, but I don't think we did, I don't think we did let that last meeting. But anyway, what you got in your packets included last month's, or the last meeting's bills, all right? So the new warrant that you're having, that's in front of you to sign...
That's the old one, and I just highlighted.
Yeah, excludes, so you didn't run another sheet, Joan?
Yeah, just for the warrant here that got signed.
Okay, so that one's, so anyway.
We didn't give everyone a new sheet.
Right, so it's actually a far shorter list of bills than what you had. The, I always talk about public works in police, and tonight I only, I actually don't want to talk about public works in police, but want to talk about fire and sewer. And, you know, fire is actually in very, very good shape. You know, Jim learned from Ralph Jackman to kind of hold off on expenses till you get a little bit later on in the year. And so you'll see that the fire department is only at 63.95%. You know, it should be, you know, you would expect that to be in the 80 to 85% point. And it's really because Jim has held back on some purchases that he plans to do before the end of the fiscal year. So it's not, it's not like, you know, we've over budgeted by 35% here. He has purposely held back on some purchases. Relative to the sewer fund, I mentioned this quite some time ago, that the auditors goofed me up a little bit relative to the sewer user fees, because based on the information that we had on our books, I anticipated that we would be billing out in the vicinity of $600,000. And there was actually a monthly bills that Joan sent in July that were really for June overages. And so there was some $11,000 or $13,000 that was really last fiscal year's money, not this current fiscal year's money. So the point is, is that had I known that, I would not have budgeted $600,000 because you aren't going to collect $600,000. So that number is more in the, you know, $585 to $590,000 mark. But the sewer fund is, you know, obviously it's in very good, good shape. I mean, we ended last year with a fund balance carryover of, you know, $72,000 or $73,000. So that, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 that we really are not going to be billing under our current rate structure will be, in essence, I think it may be offset just by the operating budget itself. But it's not like we're in trouble because we have a, we have a solid fund balance from last year. It actually went from $50,000 in FY '09 to $72,000 or $73,000 in FY '10. So there's a pretty good, pretty good cushion there.
Any questions, Mel, on the budget? Hearing none. We'll real brief on committees. Anybody that really has something outstanding on committees?
Just one thing, I mentioned at the last meeting that we were, the Recreation Committee was going to tour the parks on the 23rd. I think, hopefully everyone got my, Peter, I need your email, I don't want your email, but actually, we're going to go this Saturday, the 30th, to tour the facilities.
I'll be late, but I'll try to catch up.
We'll be, yeah, just give me a call. We're going to meet at the, at the coffee shop at 8:00 a.m.
Randy, you're gonna do yours?
I have actually two reports. I went and visited with the seniors two weeks ago and had a very nice chat with them about the new programs, snow shoveling and various things going on. Informed them of when the votes were happening and informational meetings were happening on this, the school revote. And my next task that I took over, the liaison position between the farmer's market and the board of all of them, and I have presented to you with a flyer that Rhonda had put together. I must say that Rhonda, I asked Rhonda for this on Saturday, and I had it in my, in my mail on my computer on Sunday. So it was great. I asked her to give us just a brief overview of what their intentions are for this year. They are looking for a small amount of funds to help with advertising. Everybody has a copy. And I would like your input.
Would you like a motion on that?
Yes, I would, please.
I'll move the way appropriate the $200 that they're seeking.
I'll second it.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Lowell, open for discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Rhonda's doing a very good job of this.
Very, very good job.
She's very dedicated to making this work and flow.
Yeah, she works well with us in the office, gets right back to us when people come in, we have questions. She's real good.
That's it for me.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they really need to report on? If not, we're gonna, unless Andy has some public to comment on, we will jump into old business. And part of the old business, I'm going to modify the agenda a little bit because I'm looking for my notes, too. What do I do with them? They're here somewhere. Shoot from, until I find them, so I don't shuffle paper. We didn't finish off on two individuals.[1794.63] Uh, we didn't finish off on two individuals, one, uh, was not present, he had left to deliver a land, I believe it was, and the other one, uh, we ran out, kinda ran out of time, so I closed the meeting at nine o'clock. So, I'm gonna let Joan go first on her goals for this coming year.
Okay, um, last year's and the year before, my goals have been, um, just checking into this computerization of records in our office, and what the other clerks are doing, and it's, it's where everyone's headed, and several towns have it. Um, we have, our maps are now on our computers, they are unavailable on the web, they're available in our office, to where we don't have to open up those big mapbooks, and we have an index, so if someone comes in and they say, in the map index, I need map book three, page eighty-four, we can just print them off, and they all love it. Mel hates the index, but it, I will agree, it could stand some improvement, but I love it, and if, if computerizing all our records like that makes everything that much nicer, um, I, I think it, it's gonna be great. Granted, we're all just starting this, well, some towns have been doing it now like five years, but, um, I would like to get into a town that is doing it and spend a couple hours, like, try to find a document on my own and see just how cumbersome it is. I ask our attorneys that come in our office, has anyone had any experience, like in Burlington or Williston, and no, so I guess our guys stick pretty close to home. But that's something, I mean, I've gotten bids on what it's gonna cost us and everything, Mel's like, slow down, let me talk to some other managers, see what their experience has been and what they've been exposed to. So, that's just something I will continue to work on, um, another thing...
Should we, uh, be creating a fund so we start?
She has more money, Mike, you have no idea what she has in the bank.
Oh, it's in your budget every month when we give it to you. Out of my recording fees, where we charge ten dollars, one dollar goes to book restoration, which is when I have books rebound and, um, deacified and all that. So, a dollar of every recorded page I do goes in that fund, and then, three dollars goes in this electronic fund, and the only thing we've ever spent out of there was when we did digitalize those maps. So, I mean...
Yeah, the, there's about twenty-six hundred pages, Joan, that get recorded in our land records, or that, we charge by, by how many pages come in, uh, it's not about how many pages in the book, so if you record a four-page...
Mortgage.
Mortgage, alright, that's forty bucks, and of that forty dollars, a dollar goes into restoration, and three dollars go...
Well, four dollars goes into restoration.
One dollar go into res, of the forty dollars, right, of the forty dollars, right, four dollars goes into restoration.
And twelve dollars goes into my computerization fund.
And, and Melissa does about twenty-six hundred pages a year, uh, you know, on average, I'm gonna say, so, the restoration, twenty-six hundred dollars, and then, the, uh, the computerization, uh, records computerization is seventy-eight hundred, or whatever that, whatever that mess is.
So, so I have startup money to get going, and the guy who gave me a bid on it, I've dealt with several different ones, um, they have like a three-year plan, it's not like you have to pay it all upfront, cause it's a lot of work. They take our books and bring them to Boston, and they all get scanned in, and then, they put them all back together and bring them all back to us, and...
How does that impact your day-to-day transactions if they have them?
They'll do it all in a weekend, they'll pick them up on a Friday, they'll be back in my office on a Monday morning. Yep, they chuck them, they're in fireproof vans, going, coming back, cause they really are in a little bit of jeopardy while they're traveling, but, like you said, we've never had, lost anything yet, but it's always the first time. So, and then, my next thing would be is to, um, revamp that vault, um, my vault, it's just, it just needs, I need some time to just pull it all out and put it back in and move stuff that doesn't need to be in there, and it's just getting too congested for me. And then, of course, this webpage, I've gotta get a handle on that, just because, you know, people will come in and say, can we put that on the webpage? You know, if I knew how to do it, I could just slip it right on, you know, and...
And she, she'll, she'll tape this and see this, so...
Yeah, she'll be like, at my desk tomorrow morning.
I'll come back with bruises, no, uh, you know, she will, she is willing to help out.
I know, I feel guilty, she does it all, I'm like, dude.
And if it means, I know that Jeff, you've got Jeff's phone number, I sent it to you today.
Oh, okay.
And so, you know, if the timing is right and she can make it up during, during her workday, you know, she'll spend a little time with you, and, you know, it, I haven't learned it yet, and I still, oh yeah, that's how you do that?
Well, yeah, you, you gotta keep doing it in order to stay with it, otherwise, it's like, oh my God, I can't even find that spot where I was last time.
Yeah.
So, those are my three goals.
Excellent, yup, and, uh, the web, the webpage is, is where...
Probably priority.
No, I'm not saying, gonna set priorities, uh, I, the webpage is having a big impact, I had to run a report to see how many hits it was getting, and, and it's doing, doing well. You know, there are a lot of pieces of information, I have something else, so now, I don't, it's, it's about internet, but I'll tell you in a little bit, and, uh, so, um, okay, thank you. Mr. Joe, sir?
Yeah, real quick, uh, I'm really pleased that last year, my goal was to get this swimming pool kinda, uh, helped, I didn't think I was much help, but I'm, I'm happy that the swimming pool transitioned successfully, and that's morphed into this, uh, this, uh, recreation committee, and there's a, there's a lot of energy, both from the community and the business, uh, community, uh, the community at large and the business community, or, uh, around this recreation committee, and I wanna help channel that energy into, uh, you know, some really useful information that the council can, will find interesting and useful in, in our, in our decision-making. So, I, I think that's a, I think that's a good thing, and I'd also like to continue and do a better job, maybe, of, as I talked about last year, communicating with the public, both through your newsletter and other outlets.
Well, good, and, uh, you, you just, uh, last meeting, you, uh, end up getting transferred, uh, the responsibility to skate park as part of the, part of the committee, you guys are doing a great job, the last two days, or this weekend, busy as hell over there.
Good, I'm glad to hear it.
So, that's all I'll say. Okay, good, thank you, um, on to six A, Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, Mike, I, uh, I promised at the last meeting to, uh, do some additional analysis to the piece of property by providing a, a real preliminary feasibility, uh, uh, site plan, if you will, a preliminary site plan for a, a PlayStation on that site, and I made a copy of that for, uh, for everyone here. Andy, you know, I didn't make an extra copy for you, but, okay, and one of the things that is, um, you know, one of the things that I wanted to absolutely make clear to myself was to, uh, rule out, if you will, uh, the possibility of the PlayStation fitting over onto that, the smaller, uh, uh, developable parcel there on the right-hand side. And when you, when you look at this, you really can see that there's, uh, it would really be a shoehorning, uh, to try to put that facility with adequate parking and, and, uh, compound areas, uh, over onto that, uh, over onto that right-hand, uh, parcel. So, uh, so certainly, relative to the Boys and Girls Club, uh, you know, the only potential, uh, portion of that, it would be my recommendation, the only portion that we at all consider would be that, uh, smaller portion, if we were to consider, uh, uh, conveying any land, uh, to the Boys and Girls Club. And on this, Mike, I, uh, I, I do wanna tell you that, uh, as indicated in George's memo, uh, you know, the facility that, the police department's facility at City Hall is, is substandard, and we do need to do something sometime. And, uh, uh, I can tell you that, you know, the, the, the call volume is higher, you know, we, we clog up all of the parking with police cruisers there, I, I just really think that, uh, in our municipal development plan, one of the policies in there was to consider and investigate, you know, the feasibility of a PlayStation, and, you know, I'd like to continue, uh, uh, moving forward with this concept, either, uh, you know, on my, on my own with George, or with a subcommittee of, of the, of the city council. Uh, you know, I just, uh, think that we need to do something, and, uh, let me just tell you, uh, I, I might just well come out and tell you this, cause when we start talking about a, a, a PlayStation of this size, you know, you're, you know, you're talking, you know, clearly in excess of three-quarters of a million dollars, you know, to build this facility, and, uh, and it certainly could be more, alright? My feeling is, is that, uh, relative to funding this project, you know, I, I know that nobody at the table wants to see taxes go up, but I, I think that the, the antenna money that we received on the water tower is something that certainly is, the way that that money was set up, it was supposed to go for, for, in essence, visible public improvements. And I know that sometimes, you know, it's felt that, you know, all of the revenue stream that comes from the antennas is to go to the downtown, and that's really not how that policy was written. And I'm not suggesting here that every dollar of the antenna money go to this police, uh, station, I think, you know, it generates a hundred thousand dollars a year, and, you know, if this facility was in that vicinity, three-quarters of a million, a million dollars, you know, if you got a fifteen-year bond, that probably would, would need, you know, maybe, you know, three-quarters of that, uh, of that hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, you know, that one hundred, uh, one hundred percent of the water tower proceeds goes toward this, but I think that that is a legitimate use of, uh, use of those funds, uh, towards constructing a, uh, you know, a public safety facility like this here.
Um, I'm trying to think how I ask or just direct, me, I go direct, but I'll ask first, Randy?
I'd like to make a motion that we give Mel permission to explore this further.
I would like to second.
Randy made the motion, Lowell made the second, um, open it for discussion.
Question about the motion, does it involve this specific, uh, project, or the question of finding a new home for the PlayStation?
I would like it in investigating this piece of property, because we, one, technically, we own it, so we're not having to buy a piece of property, plus put up a building.
I guess I would, I mean, I would prefer that we keep it open, I mean, I, obviously, this is a viable, you know, this is something that needs to be investigated, but at least keep it open-ended to, you know, a, and give it a little broader spectrum, I guess, to maybe investigate other possibilities, like, does that make sense?
Do, do you have a possible amendment that might give him some guidance as to...
I, I think I'd like to leave it the way it is, Mike.
Okay, nope, Zig?
I know when we were on, when we were looking for the PlayStation, we were, we had some guidelines we had to go by, I don't like it, I don't think you were here yet, um, and one of the things that, when they did the survey, that they didn't really, it shouldn't be on Main Street, that was one of the things that it should be...
It should not be.
Shouldn't be on Main Street, uh, where there's a lot of traffic, it should be off...
The beaten path.
Off the beaten, more or less off the beaten path, but in an area where you had accessibility to all the roads, I mean, to the road, so, when this came up, this is why it popped into my head, cause I remember it, I don't have that, I went back to see if I had that documentation, cause they, they gave it to us. So, this kinda fit the criteria, what we were supposed to be looking for at the time, I, I did come up down there where the Vojenspanton Water District is, but then, it was, they had concern with the bridge going across, and it got closed up, but, um...
You know, Joe, my, during the ten years that I wasn't here, and, you know, it's my understanding that Mike or Zig or Joan could help me out a little, a little bit, but there was, um, a subcommittee of, of the city council, I mean, I think Ted Manal was, was the chief at the time, I'm not sure who the other people involved with this, I think David was, uh, David Austin was...
I was, I was, it was Chris...
Chris, me.
And myself, and, uh...
So, I had to be with them for...
Dave, Dave Austin. I mean, I was with, uh, that was with April, when April was here.
No, Chris got on, um, after the year that April got out.
So, it was the first year, I think, you were...
The first year that I was, I was there.
Yeah, we were here then, because we got in this van.
Yup, I do remember something happened, I don't remember whatever happened.
So, I, I think, Joe, you know, if, if what, if what you're alluding to is to, is to step back a little bit and take a look at the city of Vergens and, and reassess, if you will, alternative locations, I think, I'm, I'm absolutely supportive of that, I, I'm... I can't remember saying it, but Andy always quotes me exactly, uh, I, he said, he said that I said, and that it may, this may not be the best site, alright? But I think I said it's a goo, it's a good site, alright? And I think that it is important that we...
We can review the take.
I, I think you're, I think you hit it on the head, Andy, really, I was picking, but I think that the decision of this site, that, that's an important decision, and there are some alternatives around town. Now, whether or not the alternatives, uh, are better, or not as good, or more expensive, or whatever, but, you know, I have absolutely no problem doing a, kind of an alternatives, uh, uh, study, you know, I don't, I don't think it takes so long, it takes a lot of time to look at other areas and towns and do a little bit of a, a pro and con, but, uh, you know, obviously, you know, one of the things that's a driver here is we paid nothing for the land, you know, so... Yeah, I certainly don't disagree that this is a, obviously, a viable site, but, I just don't know what, you know?
Yeah, and I don't remember totally, but I, there was a committee, and I know Ziggy, Randy, David, and I forget who else, I think Chris was on it, and...
They all went on a caravan trip.
You guys did, you got in a vehicle, rode around town, and, uh... Normally, I like to not speak my piece in some cases, but this one, it would just help seal the deal, uh, in a sense, that we have really looked at the whole city, and this is the best of the best. So, I, I kinda lean towards, uh, Mel and Joe's side, even though I will not be voting, um, on looking at everything, not, not just stay, uh, focused on this one plot of land, because you're only gonna do it once.
We have, well, we have looked.
Yeah, you have, but how many years ago was that? Since then, the Deniker building over on West Main Street is, is gone, uh, there is some talk of, about the President Deniker's maintenance shop going out of there, uh, that might be a viable, I'm, it's, I don't wanna say viable, that might be something to look at, but there, there, there are, uh, it's just, I, I wouldn't feel good if you didn't take a final last look before you jumped in full feet, so, that's my two cents.
Well, the reason why I, I mentioned this, cause at the time, I don't know where the documentation was, but the criteria, what they were looking for, I was sitting there all day, and I was looking at that, and my God, that fits everything that they're, you know, that, almost everything that we were looking for at a PlayStation was right in this area, so...
Okay, any other further discussion, we have motion on table here?
The, the mo, the motion is, is to...
This place.
Explore this as a potential option, but that doesn't necessarily exclude a, a broader consideration, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that does open up...
Yeah, I'm gonna, it, I'm gonna change my motion to just say that this is primary, primary exploration, but the, to open it up other locations.
And Lowell agrees to that? Adjustment.
I don't want this bogged down because of semantics.
Oh, and, and I think we see the writing on the wall, it's just that we wouldn't be doing diligence if we didn't look at everything.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think, you know, uh, as you, as you, you know, this is a small community, I mean, I know who owns every piece of property here, and I know, you know, what the zoning is and all that type of thing, I, I don't think that it would take me too long to come up with a list of alternative, you know, alternative sites. Now, I'm not, and obviously, you can tear anything down, I wouldn't be looking that, at that, I'd be looking at, you know, pieces of property, undeveloped pieces of property, or properties that might, uh, possibly be retrofitted, and, and it is my understanding from talking to David, that, you know, that, uh, when the, that committee looked at possible retrofitting, I think they just felt that would just be just far cheaper to, uh, to, uh, steer away from retrofits. But that's not to say that we, you know, that we shouldn't go back and take a look at possible, uh, possible retrofits.
Um, there is still one hurdle here that we have to overcome, and that's the easement to connect the sewer.
Right.
Cause that, if they don't allow us to get there...
Well, we can pump it, Mike, I mean, if, if we have to, we can, right, right, I don't wanna do that, but...
That just adds, adds to the cost.
Right.
There was one talk, Mel, at the time, about where Virgin's, where the water district is, is that they were looking at up here where the.
Rock crushers.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
They had talked about, like, maybe like to put their office up there, so when they talked about that, that's when I.
Right. See, I just never run across a rapport, and maybe, maybe, you know, I, I mean, I, I talk to Ted Manal from time to time.
It would be in Rennie's book.
What's that?
It would have been in Rennie's.
Okay.
Book that he left for, didn't he leave you a book?
Ah, he left me a bunch of memos, you know. Do this, finish this, but, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, if Ted prepared something, if somebody prepared something.
I don't think it was Ted.
It was Mike Lowell.
It was Mike Lowell, it had to be a Mike, because Ted was not here when I came.
Okay.
And I came in as bear.
But we, we can certainly come back with a, with an alternatives list and try to, you know, because I, I don't want to spend a lot of money on a site unless it is indeed the selected site, so.
We have a motion, any other further discussion? Hearing none. Have a motion, slightly adjusted, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carried. Okay. So we still didn't really get into Boys and Girls Club, other than.
Well, I think.
We still got to, we got to, we got to finish this first?
I don't think I need to, I think that where we're at here is this clearly, to, to, at this point in time, you know, the, you know, that it's, it's, the larger developable parcel, you know, certainly should not be considered for a possible conveyance to the Boys and Girl, Girls, Girls Club. I've already, you know, somewhat conveyed that message to Bill Benton, so I think that, you know, we, we need to keep in communication with them, and it may be, it may be the case that that smaller site may not be suitable for them, or it may not be the city council's desire to have the Boys and Girls Club on that smaller, smaller site in proximity to the police station. So I think that, you know, we just need to communicate the bill and, and wait to hear back from them.
To take a quick glance just at the top, Lowell, you've only got about a four-foot, if that, drop over probably, oh God, over a hundred and twenty feet of space, that's not a lot of drop. I mean, it's adequate, I mean, they could adjust the land with a, with a bulldozing, and a building, depending on what the sizes, could fit in there, so I'm not pushing either way. It's just, it, it could fit.
Yeah, I don't know what their plans are, so.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna just leave that lay on the table for now, leave this on the agenda, or? Do we need to act on something?
I don't think you need to act on it, anything tonight, Mike. We'll, I'll communicate from Bill and find out if, you know, really where they're at.
Okay.
And then, and then the city council can act, maybe at the next meeting.
Thank you. Six B.
Six B, one thing that I would like to get settled tonight, I have found five, there's seven members total, I have found five members. The sixth member, which would be a representative from the Virgin's Partnership, they have a meeting on, I believe, May fourth, and I've offered that the partnership make that designation as opposed to me. As opposed to me picking somebody out of the partnership. To me, the partnership board should determine who their representative is on there. There is someone that I know is interested, but they don't meet until May fourth. So I would want to have this agenda item put back on for May ten to get that information from the Virgin's Partnership. And the other thing that I need is, I need someone from this board that would sit on, sit on the loan committee. And I know Zig, you did before.
Would you be willing to do it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
It shouldn't take a lot of your time.
No, I still have my people work from the last one.
Yep, okay, so we'll get that, we'll get a firm slate.
Do we have to appoint her, or do we just?
We'll appoint her on, when we do the rest of the group on the ten.
Okay, that does that item. And we'll move right into item number seven, City Manager's Report.
Yeah, I've got just a few items to report on. Start out with a little bit of the bad news or concerning news, and that is, I ran a report the other day on delinquent taxes. Obviously, we're three quarters of the way through the year, and we have, I think it was thirty-four accounts, Joan, of delinquent taxes in the current year, which on the one hand sounds pretty good. I mean, we send out nine hundred and twenty-seven bills, and they only have thirty-four people in the rear, sounds pretty good. The problem is, the total is fifty-three thousand dollars, and we have another quarterly installment coming due. So it's a little, it's a little bit concerning. Next couple of items, deals with staff. I forgot to mention at the last meeting about Michelle Eastman getting done. She's, was our temporary accounts payable clerk for about two and a half years. She got done a couple of Fridays ago, and I hired Leslie Huston, who used to be an accounts payable clerk for Vermont Bicycle Tour. She's been with us for a couple of weeks now, Joan's training her. It's, it's amazing how, how many, the thousand things that you need to know what, how to do at City Hall. It's, it's a little, a little scary. We're trying to, you know, teach her, you know, fifty-five a day, in hopes of.
Mel wants to do like sixty.
So, but anyway, she's, you know, she's, she's really talented, she fits in. She's not a Virgin's resident, we're not holding that against her. She lives in Waltham, has some kids in the elementary school.
She can always move.
She works either a nineteen and a half or twenty-hour week. Like I said, she has three kids in elementary school, has absolutely no desire to work more than twenty hours a week, so it's, as she would say, it's a perfect job for her. Relative to the police department, I just want to let you know that John Tatro has decided not to return to the Virgin's Police Department. He's been offered a job, both a, both schooling and a job with the VA. And, you know, we thought that he was going to be coming back around the first of July, and that's why we, we hired Neil Mogerly on a full-time basis. We just could not schedule around, we have a requirement in our personnel policy that if you work more than thirty hours or thirty-two hours, you're considered a full-time employee with full benefits, and we finally just gave up and, and appointed Neil to that full-time position through the end of June, alright? And so, you know, John is, is done. Neil, I committed to Neil through June thirtieth, and that's going to happen. However, the replacement person for, for John is not Neil. The replacement, and there's no hard feelings about Neil, it's just that Regine, the flesh, who was another one of our specials, was here prior to Neil coming on board, and Regine plans to come with us full-time, I'm going to say around the first of July, and.
Is that a little deja vu?
Little bit, what?
His dad used to be a police officer.
Yeah, that's alright. So the other thing relative to Neil, we recently received a continuation, and I, for the so-called COPS grant. And what we have plans of doing is applying for a grant through the COPS program whereby you get a police officer, a full-time police officer with Bennys and everything for a three-year period, but you do have to commit for the fourth year, alright? And I, I will tell you, you know, that the call volume in the police department is just, I don't want to say it's out of control. It is, it's just way above what it's been in the past, and, and I'd have to give you a full analysis as to why that is. So anyway, you know, we really are, you know, having a very, very difficult time, you know, covering shifts, keeping up with cases with the current workload, and, you know, I think that we need to, we need that fifth officer now. And if we can apply for a grant and have the federal government pay for that fifth officer for three years, you know, it's like getting a police officer twenty-five cents and a dollar, is the way that I see it. But we do have to make that, make that commitment. So there's no budgetary impact on this for, for at least the next year and then, and the next three, but there would be a commitment at year, at year four. You're going to see some activity here, I'm not in love with seeing this rain here, but we have hired Engineers Construction to take over the street skate project in front of Shear Cuts. Linda's, Addison Outfitters, and around the corner to Holly Hawks, they've actually already started. You haven't seen any activity as far as any construction, but you're going to see a lot of activity there very soon. They all know that my goal is to get this project done by Memorial Day, alright? The Memorial Day Parade, and that's, it is an ambitious schedule, because there's a major drainage problem that got encountered with Holly Hawks, and to correct that, you're talking about major disturbances on Green Street. But what we want to do is to split the project up into two or three phases so that we can get in and get out. You know, we, you know, people, I don't know how, how they put up with this, to be honest with you. The, the length of time was just way, way too extended last, last fall. So we want to get in there, redo the areas in front of Shear Cuts and Linda's, and get out. Get out of their way, and then work on, on the next phase, or the next two phases to go around, around the corner.
Is that creative, or is that pre-existing, or is that, did that come about because of the way it was done last summer?
No, that's been there.
There's been some, there's been some drainage problem, but when it really got opened up, when that, when that whole thing got opened up, and a vein in essence got created, it got to a point, we really thought that that, that, that drain in the, on the bottom of the stairway was hooked up to something, and that's why there never was a lot of problems. And when we, when we dug that out, we found out that there was about an eighteen-inch pipe, and it put into some sand, that's all there was. So it really, I don't know how it ever worked in the past, but it worked. But yeah, I think that on occasion, there was some, some water in there, but we want to just correct it once and for all. You know, get it, get it so that it works, you know, it is a, you know, it's a downtown retail space. So I think, in essence, Joe, yeah, there probably was a little bit of an existing condition, and it really got totally exacerbated, you know, because of this, because of this project. So we hired, we actually hired two engineering firms, Phelps Engineering and Trudell, to work together to come up with a solution. They designed a solution for us, and that, that's been rolled into this, rolled into this project. So can't wait for it to be over, to be honest with you. I, I think Kristen probably feels stronger.
She's probably getting flooded right at the moment.
Exactly.
One headache, you would really like to go away.
Right. Signed a contract with Arrow Design for the Riverwalk Project. That's the stairway project behind the Benton Building. Arrow Design is a company that did the, an earlier phase in the project. They were the low bidder out by the bid lower than Kingsbury Construction. That project will get started prior to the first of June. So, and that one is not funded by, with any tax dollars, that's ninety percent funded by an enhancement grant and ten percent funded by the Green Mountain Power Co-op, Co-op Fund. Let's talk a little bit about grant lists. First off, the, we are way ahead of schedule this year for our current grant list. The only thing that we're, all of the field, fieldwork has been done, all of the change of assessment have been calculated. The only thing that we're waiting on is a report from the Tax Department relative to Velco and Green Mountain Power. Doug Lay from the department said that we were supposed to, we're supposed to get those by the end of the month. So I think that we'll have grievance, as long as the homestead downloads, Joan, are all in for percentages and everything.
Well, I loan them every Monday.
Yeah, so that's the only, that's the only thing, because, I mean, obviously, you don't have to re, you don't have to declare your homestead again any longer, like you have in the past. The problem is that if, if people who have a business in their home, or rent a portion of the property, they have to, if there's a change in percentage, they have to refile, and those need to be recalculated. So it's really, everybody is supposed to have done that by April fifteenth. Obviously, there's a little bit of a lag time, and Joan needs to, at some point, we should be told that we're done. These represent those filings that, that did file before, which is really April eighteenth, Joan, because, because of the extension. Lastly, you've heard me talk for a year and a half about our EGL appeal for the two thousand and nine, and the hearing was scheduled for today, and I actually settled this appeal last Thursday. And I won't bore you with all the details, but had I gone in front of the appeals board and won every single argument that I had, and I had a few of them, it would have ended up meaning that, in essence, the taxpayers of Virgin's collectively, from a homestead standpoint, were taxed forty-one thousand dollars more than they should have been. And, but I really felt that I was probably not going to win on every point, because the state tax department actually has some methodology, and you can't get them to, to leave that methodology. But anyway, I got a call from Doug Lay, I got a call from the director, you know, a week ago, and, you know, wondered if I had any new, new arguments that I was going to bring, and I said no. And a couple of days later, Doug Lay called, and, you know, wanted to kind of, you know, talk to see if possibly we could settle this thing without having this hearing, and we settled it. And the, what we settled on ends up, whereby the city ends up with a little more than twenty-three thousand dollars. I don't really know how it works, to be honest with you. I don't know if they send us a check. I mean, I really feel what should happen here is that twenty-three thousand dollars, in essence, shows that when people paid their education tax, they were overtaxed collectively by twenty-three thousand dollars, alright? Well, I can't really send a check to everybody, you know, so I don't know how we're gonna, how we're going to handle that. You know, Joan and I have talked just a little bit about it, we don't know. We don't know how to do it, but ultimately, you know, the taxpayers were overtaxed in Virgin's. You know, they're, you know, on their, on their homestead value, and we need to somehow just figure out a way to, in essence, get that back. The, the problem is, is that because the legislature, in essence, sets our education tax rates, I don't think we have the authority to change it, alright? So anyway, we won, we don't know how it works, alright? But money, the agreement says that we're going to get twenty-three thousand dollars. And maybe they just send us a check and say, figure it out, and we'll figure it out. So anyway, that's it for me, Mike.
Like having a credit somewhere. Okay, that's a mind-boggler, one if I ever heard one.
Yeah.
Okay, eight A, new business, grant agreement resolution.
Yeah, I did not copy the thirty-six-page grant agreement on the senior housing project, but in essence, the resolution, one of these needs to act as a, as a, an original, and I, I got your names in there, Mike, they make it easier for, for everyone, so they just, folks need to just sign to the right of your name, so.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
I think we need to make a motion without the resolution.
Randy made the motion, Lowell seconded, open for discussion. While hearing no, no discussion, I'll sign my name, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass it around, and please sign to the right of your name. Done. Here comes one of Mel's favorite ones.
Yeah.
Sewer rates.
Yeah.
Sewer rats.
Yeah, I want to, I want to do away with ten bills, to be honest with you. You know, you know, it's funny, when you look at this chart here, you know, obviously, Joan and I, we worked here a long time, but we weren't, we didn't work here in nineteen sixty-two. So we don't know what went on in people's minds to come up with this rate structure and bonded debt charge and whatever, but basically, it's pretty clear to me that in the beginning, you know, people were charged bonded debt. My guess is, when they weren't connected to the sewer system, and maybe it was done as a way of encouraging people to get onto the system, I don't know. But anyway, as time went on, there was a time when the forty-six-dollar-a-year charge was broken down where twenty dollars was bonded debt, and twenty-six was operation and maintenance. And then you fast forward twenty-some-odd years, and as that old bond goes away, the bonded debt portion becomes less and less and less, and at one point, as you can see in there, the bonded debt got down to eight dollars and eighty cents. And I think, actually, I even think about, and we used to bill this out every six months, and I, and I think, man, postage must have been real cheap to be sending out a bill for four dollars and forty cents, but that's what we did, because mathematically, that's what the bonded debt charge needed to be. Now, when, what happened is, is that when the, when the city bonded for the new improvements, is there a fine, there'd be a fine at Lyons, for sure.
Everybody checks.
Anyway, and then, when the city went back, and I think in two thousand, the new bond, alright? Whereby the, now we pay a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of a six-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. So, you know, you're talking about, you know, twenty percent of the, of the budget is for bonded debt, alright? So you have a, you have an annual fee of, let's say, at that time, it was three hundred dollars, alright? You multiply twenty percent of three hundred dollars, that equals sixty dollars. And it's my understanding, I wasn't at the table, but the discussion about making people who are not hooked up to the system go from eight dollars and eighty cents to sixty dollars and getting no service, the city council said, we're not going to do that. We're not going to charge people sixty dollars when they're not hooked up to the system. And I wasn't here, but I think that the city coun- And I wasn't here, but I think that the city council needed to take one more small step. And that is that if you aren't going to charge the right bonded debt, then don't charge it at all. And all, all the city council needed to do was to say, we're just going to stop charging this bonded debt. Now, so that, that would be, Joan and my recommendation is that we immediately cease charging bonded debt, but we will maintain that credit. I mean, I had the board look at, uh, that, this chart before where people who've been paying bonded debt all of these years and we will hold on to that information so that when, when somebody ties into the system, that credit will still exist. So we aren't going to abandon, abandon those people. We have them loaded into a separate book in our utility billing. So our recommendation is to immediately cease charging bonded debt.
Randy makes said motion. Lowell makes motion.
Why are these people not on by choice and they can't get to it or?
At the time, it was a choice, you didn't have a choice.
Too far away. We are, we have an ordinance that says that if you're, if you are within, it's a, it's a ninety-sixty and I asked Joan what it was today, it's, if you're within sixty feet, you have ninety days or if you're within ninety feet, you have sixty days, alright? And these properties, uh, you know, are too far, are too far away.
Okay, thanks.
But every so often, they tie in, it's like Claude Bourgeois, he, he, uh, you know, Pat Emerson, you notice here that how hers, she tied in a few years ago. Claude Bourgeois just barely tied in. So they do keep kind of chipping, chipping away. When their septic field fails, they, they call us.
Okay, thank you.
Open, oh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Sam Fishman Poole, back to Mel.
Last year, uh, I think we brought rate questions before you, I think four times, uh, as things, as we were learning, uh, the system. We think that we have everything compiled here. Uh, and I actually gave you a little bit of background information, the memo that was received last year. So what we would be looking for is for the city council to adopt the rates as, you know, for the two thousand and eleven system, uh, set forth in this memo of, of April twenty-second.
Ask for motion?
I make the motion.
So you made the motion, second. And Lowell made the second.
And Joe, I did fix one, one of your concerns about the half rate deal, uh, the half season at sixty percent. Like, just like Sugar Bush. I don't, you know what, I don't, did we sell a half season last year?
One.
Oh, we did, okay. So there it is.
Because some kid, I think she was away at camp or something, she only had time for the other half.
Any, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, moving right along. Recycling, no, back to you.
I handed out, uh, a slightly revised sheet today. Uh, met with Scott Olson and Randy Lampron from Casella. Uh, and the, the numbers in the right-hand column on the expense size are a little bit higher than what was in the original memo and there's really two reasons there, or two reasons, yeah, there's two, there's two reasons. One reason is, is that down, you'll notice down in the bottom, uh, where it says tons per year, the five hundred and eleven point eight seven is what was collected at the, at the center in two thousand and nine, in two thousand and ten, increased, uh, by, uh, by forty-three tons. And so obviously, what that means is that the tipping fees paid to the Chittenden County, uh, Materials Recovery Facility are a little bit higher. So obviously, that's part of the increase. The other, uh, part of the increase deal with a fuel surcharge, uh, that typically Casella does, obviously with diesel fuel at five bucks a gallon. And there is a, a slight labor adjustment. These rates have been into, into effect for the city. Uh, the methodology, if you will, has been using the same as when Casella purchased, uh, this from JR back in November of two thousand and eight. So the four-four-eight-four-eighteen is what the number we would begin paying on the first of July. I will tell you that on the first of November, uh, Casella is going to be opening up their, their own Materials Recovery Facility in Rutland. And what that means is that the materials that we are currently going to the Chittenden County facility will go to Rutland County facility. We pay an out-of-district through Casella's, we pay an out-of-district fee. Casella is doing this because they feel that they can run a facility that's less, uh, dollars per ton than the Chittenden County out-of-district. That's what they believe or they wouldn't do it. As I explained to Scott today, you know, if that doesn't pan out, you've got to, you, you got to understand that this is a city facility and the, the materials that are generated and brought to that center are under the city's control. And if the facility in Rutland ends up having a tipping fee of ten dollars and the facility in Chittenden County has a tipping fee of five, we have the authority to direct the materials to wherever the, uh, the most cost-effective place for it to go. They really feel that they, that, that they will be able to pass on savings. Probably not on the first of November, but as soon as they get up and running, there, there could potentially be some savings. So, uh, you'll notice, you know, when I run through these numbers, uh, it projects us to, you know, have a year-end balance of twelve hundred dollars, which obviously isn't a lot of money. But I, I don't really see it as being any big risk, alright? And, you know, yeah, there was a, if you notice up in the top left-hand column, where we ended the year with, you know, twenty-seven hundred and twelve dollars in the hole and that's because the tipping fee at the, at the Chittenden County facility went from minus two dollars, i.e., uh, Casella was paid two dollars a ton for materials you brought and it went to twenty-five dollars a ton. So that twenty-seven dollar delta is what drove that into the hole. So a little bit of it, this is a, a little bit of it is a crystal ball, um, uh, so there is a little bit of risk. But, uh, I, I really am, am, uh, you know, anxious to, you know, to, to give this information back to the participating towns. Uh, and I, and I, you know, I feel, you know, reasonably comfortable with, uh, with the numbers that I have here. Uh, you know, I mean, I don't think we need to have some huge pad in that fund. Uh, you know, I would hope that twelve hundred dollars would be, would be sufficient.
Any other questions, Mel?
I have a question about, I just, just a question. I, I hear occasional grumbling about congestion and potential safety issues at the recycling center. Has the city ever investigated curbside recycling and economics of that or whatever?
Uh, a long time ago, yeah, yeah.
And it's a mess.
You know, we could go out of, you know, uh, you know, we, we don't have to be in this business. You know, we could just remove ourselves from it and leave property owners on their own. And people would, um, you know, would, would, would pay whatever they're paying. However, having said that, in Middlebury, it's done, it's done to the franchise. You know, I mean, they actually, the, the, the town of Middlebury franchises their curbside recycling. And, you know, you know, I remember, you know, studying the heck out of it, you know, back when the solid waste district was, was for, was formed and, you know, I don't know that people in Middlebury are, if, if there's a lot of people complaining about, but, you know, I know that there was a lot of people that complained about mandatory recycling because, you know, some people, you know, every, you know, every two weeks, they got, you know, one tuna can and a, and a court milk jug and it cost them three dollars and sixty cents a month, you know? So, uh, I, I hear, you know, I hear, uh, you know, problems with those kinds of scenarios, but there's lots of communities that, that, that have it.
There are people throughout the town that do use curbsides still. And the other concern that I would have is, uh, additional trash if we went back to full curbside with the weather and whatnot. So that would be a, a concern.
Yeah, money-wise, Joe, you know, I, I, I remember analyzing the numbers and let, let's just say that I think in Middlebury, the rates, I don't know if it's four dollars a month or something, you know, if it's four dollars, you know, it's four dollars a month and they, they have a senior citizen thing that's three dollars and forty cents or whatever. Let's just say if it's four dollars a month, so that's forty-eight, forty-eight dollars a year. And then you ha, you know, uh, you have a thousand, uh, excuse me, you have eleven hundred households in Virgens and so you just do, you know, do that math, forty-eight, you have sixty thousand dollars. So in the case of Virgens, you know, obviously, the city's paying this bill, it's coming through your tax bill. So, uh, just like on the surface, using those kinds of rates, you know, collectively, you know, it's cheaper to do it this way, collectively. Now, i- it is a little weird because, you know, taxpayers are paying this bill, you know, through their taxes based on the value of your property. In Middlebury, it has nothing to do with the value of your property. You're sent a bill. You have a, you have a bill for whatever it is for, uh, for your curbside collection. So the money's paid directly.
Yeah, but the middlest people who choose not to recycle, they get the bill anyways.
So why choose not to recycle?
There are people out there just, just to be contrary.
Well, good for them.
Yeah, I mean, but they get char, they get charged with services they're not using.
I would say that's their choice, isn't it?
But, but certainly, you know, we don't have to be in the recycling business. That's a, you know, but we do have to, when I say that, I think ultimately the solid waste district, you know, you know, certainly wants everybody to recycle. So, uh, uh, yeah. You know, it's funny, they talk about ta, taking the trip, you know, a lot of people, you know, go to the recycling center on their way to somewhere else, you know? I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know exactly how the public would, uh...
People get charged for it anyway, right? People must get a bill for it through their tax, you know, because it doesn't cost anything to go to the recycling center. Somebody's got to pay for it, who pays for it?
Well, in essence, that, in the, in this instance, if we were to try to figure out what part of my tax bill, alright? Every, every penny on the tax rate raises twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, alright? So the twenty-six thousand dollars that you see there, the Virgen share, or if you want to use it, let's use a thirty-one, alright? That's a penny and a half on the tax rate. So if you have a two hundred thousand dollar home, a penny and a half, it's thirty dollars a year. That's what you're paying, alright?
Compared to forty-eight.
Well, if it's forty-eight, so that's, that's, uh...
So you're still getting, you're still paid for services you may or may not use. And I suspect, I mean, I'm not arguing for curbside recycling, but just for, you know, for the conversation, I would suspect that with curbside, there'd be a higher, you know, more people participate because you don't have to load it in your car and drive to the center. But I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I'm no expert on, but anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to, as part of my Saturday routine, to load up the car and go to the recycling center. I'm happy to do it, but...
Grab coffee on the way.
Pardon?
Hey, grab coffee on the way.
That's right.
Okay, um...
Yeah, because I want to be able to get this word out to, uh, you know, if it's...
Peter, make the motion to, Rashid and Joel second. And we'll open for any other further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um, we go to E, which is Barindo, um, liquor license application. Uh, there was a little bit of a problem with the previous one, something about...
The corporate name.
Corporate name change. So we have to put, ask for a motion to approve this, uh, liquor license for Barindo. Uh, liquor license, will we do, do it all at one time, Joan? Liquor, tobacco, yeah, this, this...
No, he has no tobacco.
Okay, okay.
Um, but it does include his outdoor seating, which is the same space that we've already approved.
With the same stipulations in previous years?
There is not.
Um, his, his, um, is, it just gives, uh, his ground, you know, his space on, his outdoor seating space.
Well, I thought there was something to, that if, if he was to have live music, that back door had to be closed while he was...
Oh, that's an entertainment permit. That's already been approved. This is just the actual liquor license and to serve it in the back patio area.
Okay, uh, we asked for a motion. Randy made a motion, have a second. Peter got his hand up before Joe did. Uh, open for discussion. None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Excuse me, do I have to abstain because it isn't in my building?
You should. One abst, abstention. License, outdoor agreement, seating. I didn't get any names as to who they were, other than...
Oh, okay, we got them all here. We never know who wants them. It's, um, Three Squares Cafe. And I have certificates of insurance from all of them with the applications. Uh, Bruce Leachman for Luigi's, the current Luigi's that's in operation right now. Black Sheep Bistro. And Julianne...
Laundromat.
Jones Living, yeah.
Laundromat.
So those four.
And you actually sign off on them?
Yeah, I just need a motion.
I'd ask for a motion to approve those four.
I make said motion.
Second.
Lowell made a motion, Ziggy seconded it, open for discussion.
Is there anything, this, I presume this is a standard?
Yeah, they're all the same.
Yep, yep. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. We didn't need to do it, though, right?
Joan had thrown that in.
Two thousand and eleven, G, did you want to say anything about that? To the council, just to remind them and workshop?
Oh.
JP?
Oh. I don't even have a copy of it with me, but if anyone wanted to go to it, you know, that training is available.
And the city pays any cost for that.
Who is it, who is it buying? I'm sorry.
Do you have to go?
Oh, nevermind, okay.
You got four dates to choose from.
Are we JP's or?
No, you're, you're BCA.
BCA's.
Primarily BCA's.
Right, Board of Civil Authority and that should we have any appeals, but we didn't reappraise anything, nothing's been built.
You know, I've been to one of those meetings, am I supposed to go again or does it matter if you only have to go once or what?
Um, it's, they're just like refresher courses. I would highly recommend them on a year when we reappraise, but just a regular year unless someone just wants to go and hear more about it.
That does, does raise a quick question, Mike.
Yeah, sure, go for it.
I'm getting, of course, getting mailings, brand new, from the League of Cities and Towns, I want to get. And they have a couple of workshops and things. Um, is that, I don't even remember whether there's a cost associated.
Well, if there is, there's a, there's a line item for city council training.
Okay, alright.
Can't hog it all, Peter, but, uh...
Well, I'm only new, I don't want to be strained.
Alright, okay, go ahead, yeah. Anyway, that can be all.
There are some, there are some that are very valuable to, to attend.
Okay, I'll just follow up on that.
Yep, sure. Uh, chat with, with Mel, so. Um, real quick, go through a laundry list that I have. Um, Mel and Joe's, as I mentioned last time, Mel and Joan's evaluation is coming due to the end of, as of July first. So start putting your thoughts on paper. I really would like some input. Um, garden club that I mentioned about last year, I've only had one offer and that came in to just today from the Boys and Girls Club and some of the counselors. So I sent out Mel an email to see if he can come up with a little bit of fundings to do that. And I, I haven't looked. So, um, I, I'd like to take him up on their offer, but they want to find out some guidelines first, what, what we're, uh, we're expecting of them. And it's more or less plants and flowers, keep it kind of weeded and so we got to figure out, because they preferred walking distance, but we can hope that they can walk to both ends of the town, so. Um, our next meeting is May tenth, two thousand and eleven. We'll start at six-thirty with our regular meeting, followed by the public hearing at seven o'clock. And, uh, more information will be coming forth with on the public hearing part. Uh, I have the pleasure of attending and extending the city's welcome to the forty-first Addison County Fire School, uh, this weekend at the Virgen Union High School. Um, so that's, that's going to be a lot of fun. That's why I won't be late, Joe. Uh, Greenup Day is May seventh. Anybody that is available, we'll be assembling at the park at, uh, seven AM. Please, uh, try to come out and give us a hand. Uh, Mel and I have been into some discussion, uh, that sometime, from time to time, there is other meetings that would be beneficial for the council member or a council member to go to and we have a council meeting that night. Let's talk about that, or the council member talked to me and we'll actually send you as a liaison or whatever to go get information from those meetings and bring it back to us at the next... to go get information from those meetings and bring it back to us at the next meeting.
What meetings you talked about?
Any meeting.
From other boards and stuff?
Others things. We'll take the school district. The school districts have a meeting. And, and if one of us wants to go, go to it. If there's an, if there's a count, if there's another town having a meeting, it's worth.
Selectment's meeting.
Selectment meetings. And we think it's good to have you go, you go, and then just bring back information to us as to what was happening, or go bring something from us to them. So, we just thought, and, and we'll still pay you for the, your, your evening of, you know, your council meeting and stuff.
With that being said, are we going to be more vocal on whether or not we're going to be attending so that we make sure we have a call?
Definitely, definitely. Need to, as a matter of fact, if you know that you're not going to be here, I'd appreciate an email to both Mel and I. You're not reporting to me, okay? You're just sharing with me that you're not going to be, so that both of us can either call and say, can you change your plans? Or if you're sick, you're sick. There is no changing. So, okay? But Mel and I had some discussion on that. We think we'll benefit the council a lot more by doing something like that. Is it a little bit too early to ask about how this new healthcare is going to, the healthcare reform is going to affect city budget? Okay, because it should be interesting, alright? I just passed out a copy of an email that I got from Michelle Hackett from uptake.com, which is a travel planning website. And she's looking for somebody to write articles. And so, I know how busy everybody is and some people don't care to write. So, I, I went to my good old fallback to Cookie Stephanitis. And Cookie was out of the country and just came back, but she's replied that she'd be very happy and she's going to start coordinating some articles for this. So, if you have, excuse me, if you have some things that, Joe, you like to write, if there's something that you would have to, like to put in, connect up with Cookie and share it with her. So, it's all about advertising little stories about why Virgens would be a good place to come visit, whether it be Palm House Island and the history of the, the whole water system throughout Virgens, or if it's Falls Park or McDonough, Macintosh, any of those, that's, that's what it's kind of all about. So, after that, I think that does it. So I'd ask for a motion, Lowell.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
And a second. Randy seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It doesn't matter. I mean, I don't care.